Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. And welcome to the first meeting of 2022. This is the Gallatin City Council meeting for January 4th. And I welcome you all this evening. We'll begin this evening, like we do each meeting, with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, Councilman Alexander is going to offer our prayer. And I'm going to ask that Councilman Fennell lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand with me, please.
Lead every heart pray. Turned worship God. Once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. Thank you, dear Lord, for 2021, for allowing us to come into 2022 and see a brand-new year. We thank you for all of our trials and our tribulations. We realize, oh God, they only come to make us strong. So we pray, oh God, that this meeting tonight will be pleasing your sight. Bless those who have devastation, destruction all over this land and country. Bless them in a mighty way. Be sheltered to them, be faithful to them, close to them, whatever they need. In the mighty precious name of Jesus, I do pray, and every heart says, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Van.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilman Overton is absent, but Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. There are no minutes provided this evening, so we'll move on to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where anyone can speak to any item that is on the evening's agenda. At the end of the meeting, there'll be another time where you can speak to any item that's not on the agenda but may interest you. So if you do want to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items, we ask that you come forward, introduce yourself, and give us your address, please, for the record. So at this time, we'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items open.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Happy New Year. And hopefully Jimmy is going to get better. Would like to talk about item number eight, Chandler Marketplace. Two hundred sixty-six more apartments. I remember you guys last year saying you not vote for more apartments. And here we are again, voting for more apartments. The initial proposal was fifty was already a lot, but I don't know if you do the math, but I did the math. The difference between fifty and two hundred sixty, it's, if I take out of the website an average of what they're going to rent this place, that's four million plus a year on rent. So I understand why the developer want to put more apartments. It's for the good of the community, as he said. What really strikes me is that the EDA is complaining that we don't have enough commercial zone, and you basically turn a big space of commercial and jobs to apartments mean no job. I've been hearing you saying we need more job, and here's the opportunity to keep the way that was, have more commercial, more jobs, instead of more apartments. The initial zoning was great. You know, everything started good at the meeting. I heard the mayor saying, hey, you know, until you build the commercial and the hotel in particular, I'm not going to let you build the apartments. And at the end of the meeting was, hey, we'll let you build all the apartments. You can occupy half, but we not let you occupy the rest of the half until you build the hotel. So we can be on a situation like we had on Longo Lo Park and Veterans Boulevard, where in three years or four years, they're going to come back and say, hey, commercial's not going to work. We want more apartment, and they're probably going to get folded in. So I'm kind of sad to hear, again, more apartment on top of everything that was already there. And stuff I was surprised not to hear any of you mention is Harris Lane. I don't know if you drive on Harris Lane. There is already four hundred forty-four apartment dumping on Harris Lane. We're going to put more on top of that, plus commercial zone on what's, you know, a two-way street. I haven't heard anything mentioned on that. Two hundred fifty-something apartment, that's five hundred more cars, plus all the people are going to come there on the commercial sign, who's going to dump on that little two-way lane. I don't know how it's going to work. But, you know, that would be nice if you guys can discuss that and figure it out. Again, you know, just, we already have a lot of traffic. You know, I remember five years ago coming here, and I was leaving my house in Longo Lo Park five minutes before the meeting. Now I have to leave thirty minutes before to make sure I'm going to be on time. So it's going to dump more traffic again on that zone. So I appreciate you listening, and hopefully you'll talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schvans.
Hey, Council. My name's Matt Harris, eleven ninety-six, Adalicia Hayes Court. And I wanted to talk to you for a few minutes tonight about item number eleven on your agenda. And I'm going to talk about it as a customer of the Building and Codes Department. I'm, many of you know, a home builder here in Gallatin. And the building official is going to ask for permission to increase the building permit fees. And contrary to what people would believe, I actually support that. And the, when I started building in Gallatin ten years ago, the building department had three building inspectors, had a hard time keeping up. And that was before we had the explosive growth in our construction. And your Building and Codes Department has done a good job of keeping up with the demand and doing a good job as a service to the builders. And I say, I'm here as a customer of Building and Codes, because I really am. These guys do a good job helping us keep the quality of the construction in Gallatin up to code and doing a good job. And as we all see with the number of projects coming through for new developments, the growth in this area is not going to slow down. And, you know, your Building and Codes Department is doing a good job of keeping up and being ready for that as it comes. Other jurisdictions, friends that work in Nashville and Brentwood, you know, it's not uncommon in Metro Nashville to wait two weeks to get a building inspection. In the city of Gallatin, we get them next day. And that helps the contractors make money, keeps us on pace with our jobs, and keeps the commerce moving. So just want to let you know that it's not always a bad thing to raise rates. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris. If anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items? Seeing no one, I'll declare public recognition closed. Move along now to Mayor's comments. First, I certainly do want to say Happy New Year and remind everyone that this is a great time of year to renew our commitment to those things that are important to us. And I think most of us in this room, that's the city. And I'm just very glad to be working with all of you and look forward to maybe a better 2022. We've had a couple of rough ones behind us, certainly. And I would ask that everyone remember, in your thoughts and prayers, those who have suffered loss, particularly over the holidays, because I know a lot of people around us have had some hard times lately, and I know they'd appreciate our thoughts and prayers. And just looking forward to a good year. And I want to say thank you to all of you, and looking forward to it with you. Couple events I do want to share with you coming up. Tomorrow, the Gallatin Parks Master Plan kickoff meeting is happening. That's mainly going to be me and staff. And the firm that we have employed to do this, it's going to be over at the Civic Center in Meeting Room 103 at nine AM, if you'd like to attend. The fire recruit class graduation is happening at Fire Station One at ten AM. And so you're welcome to attend that as well. Ms. Nichols has a birthday this, I think it's Saturday, it's the ninth, maybe it's Sunday. And then happening on the fourteenth, which is a week from this Friday, the Gallatin Chamber of Commerce is kicking off their annual legislative series. It's typically a breakfast happening on a Friday morning, but this week, this month, it's going to be a luncheon, and they're going to be kicking it off with keynote speaker Governor Bill Lee. And that's going to be happening at Northfield Church, ten thirty to twelve thirty PM. Reservations are required for that. Want to remind you that the Stay Warm Shelter in the gym at East Winchester, that's First Baptist Church, is going to be open every Friday in January and February from ten PM until six AM for those who are seeking shelter from the cold. Also, along that vein, on the fifteenth, there is a winter drive through Mobile Food Pantry, also at First Baptist Church, and that's happening on that day from nine to eleven thirty. On the seventeenth, which is the Monday that's Martin Luther King Junior Day, the Unity Day March that's been happening, we think since nineteen ninety-five, we're researching that to confirm that, is going to be taking a place again this year. They're going to be doing it again like they did last year, where everyone will be in their cars and they can listen over the radio. But everyone will, I think, start here at City Hall, proceed to Gallatin High School, and have the program there. And I think that is it for now. We'll have more at the next meeting. But that will conclude the Mayor's comments, moving us along now to the regular agenda. And we do have several dangerous buildings on the agenda for this evening. We'll start with item number one, which is the complaint and show cause hearing for two fifteen South Boyer Street. And I want to recognize Chuck Stewart, our building official, and Ms. Susan Hyatt McCollough, the city attorney. Well, maybe it's not, Mr. Stewart. I saw him here this evening. I thought he'd be doing it, but we welcome you as well, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
And it does appear that the owner is here. But we'll go ahead and get started in our hearing. And I will remind Council that this was on the agenda on October the nineteenth, where you gave the owner thirty days to pull a permit, and that did not occur. You also did not declare a dangerous building, so I would like to move into evidence, if you will, all of our testimony at the prior hearing, but we will do an update for now. And if you'll go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
Kevin Black, City of Gallatin, Building and Codes Department.
And you're here tonight as the designee of the building official, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And what is the address of the property at issue in this show cause hearing?
Two fifteen South Boyer Street.
Okay. And since the October nineteenth hearing, have you had any response from the owner as to pulling a permit or any other response?
No response.
And we did issue a second show cause notice for the hearing on tonight's night, and that was issued on December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, is that correct?
That is correct. It was posted on the door.
And it was also sent by-
Actually, where the door was boarded up.
It was posted on the building and sent by certified mail, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And in your opinion, as the designee of the codes official, is the property at two fifteen South Boyers a dangerous building and unfit for human occupation or use?
It is dangerous. It is unfit at this time for occupation.
Can you list for the Council the reasons that you deem it to be dangerous and unfit for human occupation or use?
It has exposed roof trusses, which are rotting and decaying, and it has the inside ceiling is collapsing inside the building.
Have any of the conditions that were listed in the complaint for this property in the show cause notice, have any of those conditions been repaired?
Not as of today.
And at the last hearing, you showed pictures of that property.
That's correct.
You have any additional pictures to show tonight?
No additional pictures. It's the same condition as it was in October.
Okay. And in your opinion, can the property be repaired for less than fifty percent of its reasonable value?
Probably.
Think that it can?
Probably.
Okay. So based on your testimony and the record before Council, what's your recommendation for the property located at two fifteen South Boyer Street?
We would like to see it repaired, of course. If not, it needs to be dismantled and removed.
And I do believe that the owner of the property is present. If you would like to come to the podium.
Good evening.
And will you please, please state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Peter Odom, six ninety-one, Carolyn Lane, City.
And you are here tonight on behalf of the property at two fifteen South Boyer Street in Gallatin, is that correct? And do you have any testimony that you want to present to the Council regarding this property?
Yes, I do. Somewhere after our last communication, I spoke, I went to Codes, and I spoke with Mr. Ron Huckabee, I think it was, and asked about obtaining a permit. And my understanding was we were to make cleanup around the property, look at necessary repairs. I was told I did not need a permit to do that. The property has been cleaned up. I have estimates that are in process for roof repair and for window replacement. I don't know who would get a copy of these, except a print that I have, and if you all would like to review them.
You can pass those to the recorder, and she can pass them?
Okay. Those three that you see on the first three pages are prior to anything that had been done at the property. Previous condition.
All right. Did you say that not all of these were previous or all-
On the first three pages, previous.
What do you mean by previous?
Prior to our last meeting, before anything was, any cleanup, anything was done to the property.
Oh, is it your testimony? You think there are no repairs that are needed for this building? It was only cleanup?
No, 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 no. No. I've contacted contractors to give estimates for replacing the roof and also for replacing the windows and doors. The fourth page, you'll see the present condition of the property. Keep in mind that this is a concrete slab and block building. It's the only wood that's in it, would be a partition or two that's on the inside. And it does have a commercial roof under the existing roof. That roof does not leak. A tree fell over on the north side of the property, of which you will see. And you will see where that eve and soffit area was damaged. Fascia board on the south side there at the front door, where you'll also see the posting, and it has one bad jaw set in it there that you can see on the, I think it's about the sixth page. End of that rafter does have some deterioration on it. North side of the building is where the tree fell, and it did do a little bit of roof damage there. So that's the largest part of the repair to that that would be necessary. But we are looking at replacing probably the entire roof. That roof is about eighteen years old, so it would need to be replaced by now. Looking on the east side. Just the soffit area there, it needs to be. It's all the windows and doors, except for one door, which is a rear door, is sealed and boarded up so no one can get in, unless vandals do some damage again. It seems that every time that this property has come into question right after that, then I've gotten some damage. I don't know why, but I have. They got on the inside, and this was the laundry. And in the front, there were dryers. So the sheet rock hardened after a while. I removed part of the sheet rock to see, looking at how we would replace that ceiling, if we would use drop-in fixtures or surface-mounted. I am an electrical contractor, so I can't do the electrical work. But other than that, the vandals did most of the damage, other than the deterioration on the roof area. But the building was cleaned up on the outside, all the trash was removed. There was a lot of brush and stuff that was there that stayed for several weeks that I thought that the sanitation department would pick up, but they never did. So I had it removed also. But the current condition of this building is not beyond repair. There has been a lot of interest in the purchase of this property. I do not wish to sell. There are other property owners in the area that have been informed that I consented to sell if they wanted to, and that is incorrect. I don't know why the sudden interest that has been developed, and maybe you can help me out a little bit, why we are looking at a dangerous building of such. So help me out some, tell me how this all got generated.
As to being a dangerous building? Well, the Codes Department came out, the building official deemed it a dangerous building. They posted it. They waited, I think, a, probably a year or so, and they reposted, and they never heard anything from the owner. And then the dangerous building notice was sent. And then you were here on October the nineteenth. At that time, the Council told you you had thirty days to pull a permit. It's my understanding from, based on the Codes official, that a permit would need to be pulled. And according to the people in the Codes Department, that permit has not been pulled. Now, you've testified that you've been told you don't need a permit. We're going to have to let Mr. Black come up here and give his opinion on that.
Well, I can only go by what I was told.
Find out from Mr. Black what the deal is about the permit?
This building, I don't know how the communication transpired between Mr. Odom and our department. This is the first I've heard about this, but as far as the permit goes, but it will need a building permit for the repairs, a renovation permit, which is not an expensive permit for the repairs. And I can address how we originally, how this was called to our attention again, is from the fire department, fire inspectors called this to our attention again. That's where this initiated.
Do I need to make out a motion?
Yes, you would.
Correct. I'll make a motion. We give fifteen days to get a permit.
Second.
I believe Mr. Alexander has a question.
I just want to ask Ms. Odom a question, if I may, before we go. Sir. What was your plan for this building? And what is your request from this Council?
Is there some type of petition that's supposed to be in order citing that this is a dangerous building? Would petitioners or something for this action to start, or does it just?
No, I mean, we've already been through that process as far as deemed as a dangerous building. What I was concerned about, what is it that you are asking for this Council? Do you, are you planning on fixing the building? Do you need more time? Time, how much, so how much time or, you know, because we've had these buildings for quite some time, and what we're trying to do is kind of clean up the community. But, you know, if you, if you think you're going to do it or can do it within a, I guess, reasonable amount of time, I think the Council will along with you. We just need to know what your plans are.
If, if we can get the clarification at Codes, I went to Codes, and I acted on what I was told. That's all I could do. Now, if it's some other stipulation, then, you know, I need to get the notebook properly and see where we go. But my intentions are to repair the building and either to lease it or put a business in it.
Do you think you could pull a permit within fifteen days?
If they will allow me to have one.
Mr. Black, I think he would do that.
It needs to be clear stipulation of what they are requesting. You know, the roof repair is, and quite naturally, the interior of it is going to be renovated anyway.
I think the first step, unless I'm not sure, I think the first step is the permit. You'd have to go show the city that you are intending to do something about it, and I think that start with the permit. I think we get that for, I think, the city will work with you. Because we do want it fixed. I mean, we-
By all means.
Want to tear it down, we don't have to. But if you show some kind of effort via first starting with that permit, I think things would go better. That's just my opinion.
So fifteen days I need to see if I can acquire a permit from Codes.
There has not been a vote. There's a motion and a second. The question that I would ask as a follow-up is, you pull a permit, and then what kind of timeframe, do you all desire any timeframe beyond that, or do you just want to leave it to fifteen days to pull a permit and take it from there?
What did we do last time?
Last time, you gave thirty days to pull a permit.
That was it?
That was it.
Fifteen days to pull a permit, and then they can come back to us.
And we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion related to it?
I guess my concern is why it's happening so often. I mean, if, if you went to them and they wouldn't give it to you, what is going to happen differently this time?
Well, I would suggest he work directly with Mr. Black or Mr. Stewart, who have full knowledge of what's going on with this property.
Sounds good.
I think Mr. Black has something he'd like to say.
Send your card. You got my card? Okay. Well, I'm going to ask Mr. Odom to call me tomorrow. We're going, I'll help him expedite the process of getting this permit pulled between myself and Mr. Stewart, who is here tonight. We'll get it taken care of.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from anyone?
Do you have a desired time to get this project completed?
Yes, I would like to, as soon as possible. Contractors are sort of hard to find right now, dependable ones anyway. But the main concern is to get the roofing in and out of a repair, and then we can work on the rest of it. There's a lot of equipment that's in there that will have to be removed, laundry equipment. So I'll have to be able to dismantle it and get it out, so we'll have an open space.
You got any bids on the project yet?
I'm in the bid process right now, yes.
Anyone else? There's a motion and a second to give the property under fifteen days to pull a permit for repairs on the building. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no.
Building, that building owner is given fifteen days. We'll move now to item number two, which is dangerous building complaint and show cause hearing for four thirty-two Pace Street. And again, I guess Mr. Black and Ms. Hamacoli.
It is my understanding, Mr. Black, you can tell me if I'm wrong, that codes is currently working with the owner of this property and you expect a permit to be pulled tomorrow?
Yes, as of this afternoon, we have an application in the process, so we'd like to withdraw this.
Okay. So there's no need to have a hearing on this matter on number two?
So we will consider that one withdrawn with everyone's approval or agreement and move along to item number three, which is dangerous building complaint and show cause hearing for six forty-seven Pace Street.
And it's my understanding a permit has been pulled on this property. Is that correct?
Yes, there's a demolition contractor and a permit issued on this, so we'd like to withdraw this one also.
No concerns from any members of the council? We'll consider it withdrawn as well.
Seeing no one. Okay, moving along to item number four, which is dangerous building and show cause hearing for seven thirty-three Lake Street.
Is the owner present for seven thirty-three Lake Street? All right, well, we will go ahead and, Mr. Black, we'll go ahead and get started on this, on the hearing and let them come up. Mr. Black, go ahead and state your name again for the record, please, for this hearing.
Kevin Black, Gallatin Codes Department.
You're here as the designee of the building official tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And what is the address of the property at issue in the show calls hearing?
Seven thirty-three Lake Street.
And will you now give testimony regarding the property and the process that your department used in attempting to contact the owner of the property?
He tagged it as a dangerous building and then in English and Spanish. We ta- also tagged stop work orders because partial demolition had begun, but then construction had, had begun on the building without permits to partially reconstruct the building. And we never received any contacts from the owners with both the dangerous building posting and the stop work order.
Was the construction ceased?
As far as I can tell, it pretty much ceased for the last few months.
And you said you did not receive any response from the owner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And following no response from the owner, the codes asked the council to issue a show calls notice and complaint to notify the owner of the hearing tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the show calls notice and complaint were served by regular mail, certified mail posted in, on the property and an ad was placed in the newspaper. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Following those notices, did you receive any response from the owner?
Until moment, just a few minutes ago, basically.
And in your opinion, as the codes official designee, is the property at seven thirty-three Lake Street a dangerous building and unfit for human occupation and use currently?
Absolutely.
In its current state?
Yes.
And can you list the reasons for the council for that opinion?
Well, it basically, it has no flooring, no ceiling, no windows, no anything. It's, it's, it's wide open. Has, it does have a roof on it, but it, it only has partial construction of the walls, no flooring in it at all.
Okay, the show calls complaint and notice lists the following reasons. The structure is unsafe, broken, missing and water damaged ceiling joists, broken and water damaged roof rafters, broken and water damaged roof decking, broken and water damaged roof shingles, broken and water damaged window seals and screens, broken and water damaged doors and frames, broken and water damaged decks and porches, and broken and water damaged eaves and overhangs. Do that, all of those conditions still exist today?
Yes, they do.
And you did provide pictures to the council in the agenda packet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Have any additional pictures you'd like to show council tonight?
Nothing has changed.
So I would just ask council to rely on the pictures that were presented to you in your packet? And is there any other testimony that you deem pertinent for this matter?
We would like to get, either get, if the reconstruction is going to continue, we need to get permits issued for that or it needs to be demolished and removed.
Thank you. The owner present?
Hi, I'm here to help and to do some translation. I hope you guys understand.
Okay, I need you to, to state your, the name and address for the record, please.
My is Jorge Rodriguez Lopez and the address is seven thirty-three Lake Drive.
And is that where he lives as well?
No.
What is his current residential address?
One ten Sunset Central Tribe, Hendersonville.
Okay, and what testimony would he like to present to the council this evening as to whether or not this is a dangerous building?
Just want to say that he just bought the property like a year and a half ago and he sold the property for someone else. But for some reason, the person don't do the, the transfer, the closing. And we tried to get a holler from the new owner and he's out of country for now. He just, we talked to him today about that and he just
I'm sorry, you tried, what, you tried to get a what from the owner?
We tried to get a holler him. We talked to him today and he just say, if he requested for one month for, in one month, he's just gonna come back here and he's just gonna do the permit to do the, renew the house.
And are you aware that construction was started without a building permit?
Yes.
Okay, and you are, are aware now that a building permit must be obtained before any construction begins?
Yeah, he's not gonna continue until, if we can see, if we get the permit to continue to do the construction work.
And is the gentleman with you tonight going to pull that permit or is it a different person who's going to pull the permit?
It's a different person.
And did I understand you to say that you've sold the property recently?
Yes, he sold the property.
Do you know who he sold the property to?
I don't, I don't know his, well, I know him, I know his name, but he's out of country for now because his dad has passed away. So he's, he's gonna come back next month. And that's only that he needed one month to get the permit.
According to the register of deeds office, there is not a new owner, so will something be filed with the register of deeds?
For some reason, I don't know, I didn't do the closing on, on this property, but it's already sold out the property. It's belonged to someone else. I just got to talk to him tomorrow and let him know if you guys wanna give him a month to get the permit or he has to come back and turn it down, completely down, you know?
You understand that the, the reason you're here tonight is not to give additional time to get a permit, but the codes department is asking that it be deemed a dangerous building. I don't know what the council's intention is going to be, but you're here tonight because it's, codes department is asking that it be deemed, be deemed a dangerous building and either be repaired or demolished.
That, that can be repaired. It's like fifty percent is repaired already. We just have, we waiting on him to come back and get the permits. I would to keep going with that.
And what is your plan if the new owner does not pull the permit?
We talked to him and he's already agree with that.
He's ready to pull the permit?
Yes.
And why has he not pulled the permit until now?
I don't know. I think because the material and all that is going expensive. But he just wanna keep, he just do like a park because he just wanna, he don't want to get the water into the house. He just do, you know, they don't have no flooring because he know that he has to pass inspection on the foundations and chilling inspection and all that stuff. So that's how he don't do anything like that for now.
And he understands he can't proceed with any construction without a building permit?
Is he Latino, the one that bought it?
Yes.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Who owned the house?
Doesn't know the new owner's name. There must be some documentation.
He, no, we don't, we don't provide today, but I
Could you provide closing documents to this council if, say, we put this off for a week or something so we can contact? It doesn't seem, when, when was it sold?
Sold like two and a half months ago.
Did, did you meet with an attorney or a, a closing agent?
Yeah, we turned with the
An attorney? Who is your attorney?
Not with the closing agent.
Met with a closing agent? Who was the closing agent?
I forget, but it's in Nashville. We got all the, all the papers, so if you give us, us time, so you can bring it over here.
I believe that my, my name and address was on the complaint that you received that brought you here tonight. Could you provide those documents to my office?
When? Tonight?
Obviously, I don't think you can do it tonight, but if you could get them to me tomorrow, that would help us with the new owner. I don't know what the council's intention is going to be to move forward with this.
I feel, I mean, I feel like not being certain that they're the owners and haven't been for two and a half months, that we should defer it to the next council meeting since you're in contact with them and see if we can get the information and then have a conversation with that owner. What, what are your thoughts, folks?
I think it's probably a communication barrier and, and you need to bring the other guy with you to the next work session.
Is he out of the country?
He is.
So he's out of the country?
His dad, he just passed away like five days ago.
Where was he? What part of the country is he in?
El Salvador.
And he's not coming back for a whole month?
Probably he's gonna be there for a whole month. Well, yeah, I think, I think so.
So you all know each other?
Him is the owner. I just hear, it's my brother. I just helped him too.
Oh, okay. But do you know the new owner?
I know the new owner. I know that his first name, but I don't know the, the whole last name.
But if he's not gonna be back in a month, is it possible for him to pull a permit within a month?
He's gonna be back for sure because he's got all his family here. So he just, he's gonna be back in a month.
You want to give him thirty days?
Did you say he's gonna be back in March?
February.
May not be back in thirty days.
And if this is a dangerous property, what can happen between now and then?
It's not too dangerous. And nobody lives there because it had all exposed, but it's, it's safe.
Can you call him?
Gotta call him. He's got a racing. It's got a, it's safe. It's not gonna fail in thirty days for sure.
Means can you call him on the phone? Is that what you meant? Call, call on the telephone, the new owner?
Well, and the danger, just for your understanding, is not just about someone living in it. It's about, you know, children venturing into it or, or anyone that could go on that property and get hurt and, you know, they shouldn't be, but they could.
So you came tonight even though you didn't own the property?
Yeah, he's just gone here because he's got a, receive a paper letters on
He's wanting to receive the information.
The complaint was sent there because that's the last known owner according to the register of deeds.
Yeah, that was under his name. That's what I had come here.
What is the timeframe if it is declared a dangerous building? Do they have, we decide how many days they have to repair or?
By law, there are six, we, we could not demolish it for sixty days because they have sixty days to file an appeal.
I mean, that, that's
Make a motion that we give him thirty days. Treinta dias. Usted necesita un permiso primero no trabajo.
And you tell us what you just said so we can have that on the record?
I just said that he needs to get permission first. There's no, no working on it until he gets permission.
So we give him thirty days for somebody to pull a permit or?
Be here in thirty days.
For the owner.
What is, what is, what is the motion?
The motion was thirty days to pull a permit. Motion and no second.
We need to know who the owner is too.
You have a specific date that he's supposed to return?
Yeah, he's gonna be back here on January twenty-seventh.
January twenty-seventh. And we have a, a motion, but no second currently.
Or, or it's a question. Does anyone else can get the permit?
Ask the, the codes official.
Licensed contractor can pull the building permit for this because it will need very extensive renovation and reconstruction work.
Did you understand a licensed contractor can pull the permit?
Yes. And I don't think it's gonna be able. He just got to come here and he just going to
I'm sorry?
I don't think it's gonna be able to get a contractor license to do that. He just has to come here and do his own.
He's not a licensed contractor?
No. He do construction work, but I don't know contractor license.
Mr. Black, do you have a response for that?
Well, I would have to look into this a little farther because this is, this is probably about a ninety percent reconstruction of this house, basically. The whole top floor was torn off of it and then an attempt was made to build a whole second story on it. Like I said, all the flooring was tore out of it. The walls aren't even all, the exterior walls aren't even all complete. The house is very open. It's not even a complete shell of a house right now. So it probably will need a contractor to, to do this.
You say it's probably a tear down?
What? Excuse me?
Is a tear down?
We thought they were, when they started the work, they were gonna demolish the whole house, but they didn't. They demolished most of it and then started building a second story on top.
So in your opinion, it would not pass any kind of inspection currently?
No, no, no. And our concern is there is housing authority property right across the street, so there's kids playing all over the place in that neighborhood.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Sounds really dangerous.
And I think the best
Does it look like, Mr. Black, does it look like they have a lot of money invested into what they're trying to do at this point? No, no dinero poco? Si.
And will you, for the record, just tell us what exchange just
That he needs to just tear it down and throw it away. He said yes.
And to pull a demo, can anyone pull a demo permit? Who needs to pull the demo permit, Mr. Black? A licensed contractor?
They can pull a demo permit.
Did you, do you understand if you tear, you can pull a permit to tear everything down to demolish the structure that's there right now?
But he doesn't own the property.
Not certain who owns the property.
I had to tell him what you guys decide to do.
It, it, if we declare it a dangerous building today, the owner would have sixty days to appeal that, which to me protects the cities, protects the city and, you know, puts whomever the owner is on, you know, significant notice. And we will be happy to navigate if you can provide the closing papers and make efforts to reach out to the actual owner if you can get a if you can get us that information. But if you are no longer the owner, then you really shouldn't have to be in this mix, but the city still has to protect its position, especially since we have recognized it as a property that could potentially be a threat. But I don't have a vote, so.
Did, he showed you a picture of how the house looked like?
Yes.
It's up to you, if you guys want me to tell him to turn the house on, I wanna tell him that.
Do you understand what I'm saying, that if, if they do declare it a dangerous building, it would then give them 60 days to tear it down or make an effort to start on a repair, and they can appeal during that period of time? So that would give, we will have officially declared it a dangerous building and protect ourselves, and your, or the owner would have the opportunity to make a determination as to which they're going to do, and if they wish to repair it, they can come back and ask for more time if they were to really get busy and get on the repairing of it. Does that make sense?
Still got some time. Okay.
And it's never the city's intent for the city to demolish the building. We want to work with owners so that we can get repairs or demolition made by the owner rather than the city. If, I want you to also understand, if the city demolishes this building, there will then be a lien on the property. Do you, do you understand what I mean by lien on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we deem this building a dangerous building.
Have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Hayes. Any further discussions at this point? I'm just gonna repeat one more time before we vote. If it's declared a dangerous building, they then have 60 days to repair or demolish. Now, if he gets back and he gets permit pulled, and he starts really rocking on the repairs, and he's not gonna make it in 60 days, he certainly can come back to this council and ask for more time. He can also come back to this council in that time and appeal the determination of the council that this was a dangerous building, so.
And you, you have my name and address on the, on the paperwork that was sent to you, so you can contact my office, and I can put you in contact with the codes department if you don't have their number, and they are the ones that can help you with pulling permits. Okay?
Any of us will help you or him navigate, so. Let's. Um, any discussion from anyone, any questions? All right, all those in favor of declaring the property at 733 Lake Street a dangerous building, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is declared a dangerous building, and the, and the situation is as I've described. 60 days to repair or demolish. Contact us anytime if we can help in any way, or if he wants to appeal, or if he needs more time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five is a dangerous building complaint, and show cause hearing for 1025 West Street.
And it's understanding a permit has been pulled on this property as well, so there's no need for a hearing.
No, we can withdraw this.
Okay, with the council's approval, we will withdraw this, since the permit has been pulled, and move on to item number six. And that's the end of the dangerous building hearing. So move on now to second reading on ordinance 02111-70. And for that, Councilor Overton is not here this evening. I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Fennell to read this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning 10.72 plus or minus acres from PBP Plan Business Park District to MRO, an office district, and approval of a preliminary master development plan for Oxford Station Phase Four, containing 51 multifamily residential units and two open space tracks, located south of Vietnam Veterans Boulevard, which is SR 386, and west of Offit Drive, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, and providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilman Hayes. Opening the floor for any discussion this evening.
My question was on, about Igris. Is there a, the road that comes around, is that just one way in and out?
Engineering or, or planning?
They will gain access through the existing driveway, roadway system, in the first two phases. So this will be on the west side and connect to that.
So how many homes would be exiting?
Uh, well, there'll be the 50, 51, I think it was, additional homes that will be exiting through the street system that is constructed now. So this will connect to the northwest corner of the phases that are currently built. So it'll access all two Offit Drive.
Okay. Got it.
There's no access to Highway 386, no connection.
Thank you.
One else?
Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02111-70. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Second reading is passed unanimously. Item number seven is second reading on ordinance 02111-71. Councilman Fennell again, please.
This is ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning four lots, comprising a 3.9 acre, acres plus or minus, from the R15 medium-density residential district to the R15 PRD medium-density residential, planned residential district, with a preliminary master development plan for Monday Rogers Road, located south of Rogers Road and west of Mark Circle, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, and providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02111-71. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. This is passed unanimously. Item number eight is second reading on amended ordinance 02111-72. Councilman Overton is not here. I'm gonna give Councilman Fennell a break, or Vice Mayor Fennell a break, and ask Councilman Hayes to read this, if you would, please.
I think this is gonna be a-
I thought it was deferred.
Deferred. So, motion to defer.
Second.
Have a motion to defer, item number eight, and a second by, a motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Okay, is there any?
I think the reason is that they're out of town, they're not here, so.
Yes, please.
James Fenton with the Economic Development Agency. I received a, an email from the attorney representing this group a week and a half ago, indicating he was going to be out of town, and asked for it to be deferred. At that point, I think the packets had already been sent out, and I'm not sure why. The word didn't get there, but they are asking for this to be deferred, just because their whole team is not in town.
Okay, well, I was unaware of it, and they knew when it was scheduled, so I wish that we had not put it on the agenda, because they weren't distributed yet, were they, by Councilman George?
That's what, that's what Mr. Cook indicated to me.
Yeah, and it's also something that we should have mentioned at the front of the meeting, too, because we've probably held people here this evening that had interest in that item, that now we're deferring it. But we have a motion and a second to defer it, so with that, I would ask for a motion, I mean, a, a vote. All in favor of deferring, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Item eight is deferred. Thank you, Mr. Fenton. Moving on to item number nine, which is first reading on ordinance 02201-1. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter Nine, Fire Protection and Prevention, Article Six, Fireworks. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. Opening for discussion.
This is where we're raising the fees for, okay, just making sure.
Anyone? Okay, we'll take a vote on first reading on ordinance 02201-1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. First reading passes unanimously. Item number 10 is first reading on ordinance 02201-2. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriating from receiving an amount of $5,204.6 from insurance claim for damage to traffic signal, now so moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02201-2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. First reading is passed unanimously. Item 11 is first reading on ordinance 02201-3. Councilman Fan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter Five, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Three, Section Five, Dash Five-Eight, Section Five, Dash Six-Five, Article Five, Dash One-Fifty-Five, and establishing a new fee schedule, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Any questions, any discussions on this?
I do have one thing. Someone from the codes department alerted me that in, on page eight of the fee schedule, there is a typo where it says fireworks, and it's under other operational fire inspections and permits. It says refer to ordinance 01710-88, and there should be a new, the new ordinance for fireworks, which is 02201-1. So that is a typo that does need to be corrected.
And so do we need to offer that in the form of an amendment?
I think that we should, since it was put on the agenda.
Okay.
That way.
Move we make that amendment.
Okay, a motion to amend that and correct the typo by Councilman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman George. Everyone understand and okay with that? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Be back to the original motion. You're ready to vote? This is first reading on ordinance 02201-3. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item 12 is Resolution R2201-1. Councilman Hayes, if you would, please.
This, this is a-
This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, in Cumberland Place North, Phase Three, Section Two. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R2201-1. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item 13 is Resolution R2201-2. Councilman Hayes, please.
Yeah, this is a resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, in Cumberland Place North, Phase Four, Section Two. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? This is Resolution R2201-2. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate by saying no. It is passed unanimously. Item number 14 is Resolution R2201-3. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, resolution appointing Brittany, is it Early? Brittany Early to the Gallatin Health Educational and Housing Facilities Board. Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a, a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Fan. You all do have on your desk an amended, proposed amended ordinance, because this would actually, appointing her would put her in through the end of the term that PJ Davis actually occupies, which expires soon, and it's a six-year term. And so the amended ordinance actually puts her on the board until the 2028.
So motion to amend.
Well, I say that.
Motion to amend.
So this is a six-year term?
Plus a few months, so. So a motion to amend by Councilman Hayes. Who have the second, I'm sorry? Councilman, Vice Mayor Fennell. Okay.
Have it as Fan? Was that correct? Councilman Fan?
No, Mrs. Fennell.
Okay. Vice Mayor Fennell would be the second.
Sorry.
On the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Uh-huh.
Opposed, say no. Back to the original motion, or the original resolution, which is R2201-3. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item 15 is Resolution R2201-4. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution appointing Brittany Early to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is Resolution R2201-4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number 16 is Resolution R2201-5. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution updating and renaming fund balance policy to general fund policy. So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any questions, discussion on this? Remember, these are the policies that Ms. Nichols is trying to get in order to better comply with the way the state would like things done. So we have a series of those to approve. All in favor of Resolution R2201-5, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It's approved unanimously. Item number 17 is Resolution R2201-6. Councilwoman George.
Resolution establishing enterprise fund policy. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion anywhere? Okay, this is Resolution R2201-6. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item number 18 is Resolution R2201-7. Councilwoman George.
Thank you again. Resolution to update threshold for capitalization. I so move.
Uh, second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Resolution R2201-7 does pass unanimously. Item number 19 is Resolution R2201-8. And, Councilman Alexander, will you take this, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, approving or seppant of property donated within the vintage Baker Crossing subdivision, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion?
That's that piece of property across the street from that park that we-
It's down near Liberty Branch, it's the other side of the road from it, but it'd be come part of our parks. All right, this is Resolution R2201-8. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number 20 is Resolution R2201-9. Vice Mayor Fennell.
This is a resolution ratifying proposed amendments to the Southern County Comper Hensive Growth Plan, and forwarding the same to the local government planning, I can't, adversary committee. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Resolution R2201-9 passes unanimously. The county and the other cities in our county will be grateful for that. We are the last ones to get that passed, and I'm glad that we have done so. 21 is Resolution R2201-10. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving our application administration system two to administration, assist in three responsibilities, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Fan. Opening the floor for any discussion. Okay, this is Resolution R2201-10. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda, bringing us now to other business. I do know that Ms. Nichols has a report for us this evening.
And I apologize, I came up here and left my copies downstairs, but in your packet, you should have had two forms of- And I apologize, I came up here and left my copies downstairs, but in your packet, you should have had two forms of a state form that we're required to file and to notify you of regarding the two bond issues that we recently did on the water sewer. It's the CT form that the state requires us to file. It lists, um, the money that we received, the uses of it, the interest rate that we're paying on it, and you just have to, uh, accept that at, at the meeting, so.
Don't need to vote on it, we just need to publicly present it, and proven that everyone has been made aware of it. Any questions, Ms. Nichols?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with anything to bring forward under other business this evening? Councilman Alexander, you are recognized.
I want to thank everyone for their support and help, and my wife and I giving out grocery boxes, uh, uh, during Christmas time, it was a great success, and really special thanks to my son, who came in from Brooklyn, New York, to really lend a big hand. And I didn't have to give him any money, thank God.
And brighten mom and daddy's Christmas, right? Well, thank you for doing that, that's a really generous act that your family does for the community.
I thank all the family and friends that supported and helped out, I couldn't have done it, we couldn't have done it without you, your help, thank you.
Mr. Tugel, you look like you're about to launch, did you have something else? Okay, good. All right. Um, no one else with any other other business? Okay, we'll move along now to public recognition on non-agenda related items. Anyone that has an item that they'd like to address that was not on this evening's agenda may do so at this time. Again, you would come forward, introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Public recognition on non-agenda related items is open? Yeah, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I will declare public recognition on non-agenda related items closed. And with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman George, a second by Councilman Alexander, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned, I wish you a good night, um, stay safe, be kind, we'll see you soon. Thank you.